I'd like to call to order the council meeting of September 9th, 2015. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Here.
Peg Conway?
Here.
Bill Doring?
Here.
Ed Hattenbach?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolfe?
Here.
Scott Larmer?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Chief Wallace?
Here.
Rick Kay?
Here.
Now if everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is our minutes from our meeting of August 10th. There were, there was one change that was sent around to council members earlier today by the clerk. Did everyone see that? And are there any other changes that people want to submit? So, given that there is a change, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I move that the minutes be accepted as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are hereby approved. Next item on the agenda is the finance report from July 2015.
The finance report for July 2015, the UAN report was included in your packet along with a summary of our financial situation. I just want to briefly talk about the general fund portion of that. In regards to the earnings tax, which is the largest source of revenue for the village, the collections during the month of July was a little over $156,000. This is down about 10 percent from July of 2014's collection of $175,000. So our year-to-date collection of earnings tax is about $1.7 million, and that is down about 7.6 percent compared to last year. And we've been trending in that, in that fashion most of the year. The earnings tax collection estimate for 2015 is $2.8 million. Some other revenue sources I want to mention, the local government fund that received that from the, from the state, a little over $5,400. So the total revenue for the month of July was $195,240. Our expenses for the month of July for the general fund was $280,000. So you see what, there's an imbalance there, which is why we have the reliance on the police levy, because that picks up a significant source of our expenses here in the village. The 2015 earnings tax estimate I mentioned was $2.8 million. So we've collected 62 percent of our earnings tax that we had estimated at the beginning of the year. So that's, that's, 62 percent is pretty good at this point. The overall revenue for the village of, the estimate was $4.4 million, and we've collected almost 62 percent of that as well. The expenses overall, we had budgeted $4.2 million, and we have spent $2.2 million, which brings us to a percent of expenditures of 52 percent. So we're doing extremely well on keeping the expenditures down. The unencumbered general fund balance at the end of July was $4.1 million, and that's where we had been tracking most of the year as well. Councilmember Warren had given me a couple of questions, and I just wanted to address those. He had a couple of questions in regards to the fact that the income tax has been flat to declining this year, which is the case. But overall, we are ahead from a percent standpoint. We're doing well in the collections, but we are down about $200,000 compared to 2014. So I mentioned we've taken in $1.7 million at the end of July. At the end of July of 2014, we had taken in $1.9 million. So there is a $200,000 difference there. And in regards to the, the revenue that we've collected, when you compare that to the amount we've collected so far in 2015, to what we collected overall in 2014, I factor out a one-time payment of $250,000, which was, was received in December. Council's aware of that situation. And so that brings our, our 2014 revenues to 2.7 million. So when you compare what we have taken in to date compared to what we've taken in last year, we're still at about that 62 percent. So it's all very consistent with, with what we've been seeing this year. So that concludes my financial report.
Are there any other questions for the manager? If not, we will move on. We were, and we still may, recognize a resident who ran a program earlier in here, but I do not see her here right now. So when she gets here, we'll bring that up on the agenda at that point. At this point on the agenda, I will turn it over to the chief. We are privileged tonight to have another swearing-in related to our police department.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank everyone for coming tonight for the swearing-in of Officer Ryan Shaw to the rank of Sergeant. Thanks to family, friends, coworkers, as well as residents for being here. First thing I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna give a little bio of Ryan. Ask Ryan to come forward first. Ryan was born in the city of Cincinnati where he attended Princeton High School. He joined the United States Marine Corps as a reserve in the Ohio National Guard. He attended Hocking College and graduated from the Great Oaks Police Academy in 2000. Ryan has excelled in the police department, has done a great job, and tonight it's an honor to be able to promote him to the rank of Sergeant. Before we do that, I just want to acknowledge a few people that Ryan has an audience with him tonight. If I miss anyone, I'm, I try not to, I'll just, I have to read who's on the list here. I want to welcome his wife, Anna Shaw, his daughters, Ally and Jocelyn Shaw, his mother, Karen Shaw, his father, Lloyd Shaw, his brother, Tony, his mother-in-law, Gary Veer, Jerry Veer, sorry, brother-in-law, Bobby Sturm, and his great aunt, Eileen Weber. Unable to make it tonight due to a passing just recently was Anna's grandmother, Lucille Veer. She passed away over the Labor Day weekend, and she was really excited about Ryan getting promoted, and I just think it's important. We, I had a pleasure meeting her a few years ago when Ryan first started here, and she was a, you know, a pleasure to be around. So I know that she's looking down right now, smiling and happy that Ryan's getting promoted. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the mayor to come forward and swear in our newest sergeant.
Okay. First, congratulations, and I'll shake your hand afterwards again. If you could repeat after me. I, Ryan Shaw.
I, Ryan Shaw.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Amberly Village.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Amberly Village.
And I will discharge the duties of the sergeant to the best of my ability.
And I will discharge the duties of the sergeant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
At this point, I'll invite Ryan's father, Lloyd Shaw, and his mother, Karen Shaw. Lloyd Shaw, I want to point out that was also a member of the United States Marines Corps, and he'll be actually pinning Ryan's badge, and his mother actually putting on his chevrons. Please come forward. Jocelyn and Ally. The newest sergeant in Amberly Village Police Department, Sergeant Ryan Shaw.
I hope they let us know, because I'm reading this.
Just step all the way up.
They've had chickens since they were legal. I've got some eggs from Atlanta once.
I call it the Great Non-Event.
Non-Event. Everything is a non-Event.
Okay, we can now, we'll now move on to committee reports, and the first committee is the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I wish to introduce an ordinance to change, to include a new chapter of income tax ordinances to the Village ordinances. The purpose of this motion is to adopt ordinance number 2015-12, creating Section 101 of the Income Tax Ordinance and amending Section 93 of the Income Tax Ordinance. The purpose is to create the new income tax ordinance and to amend the current income tax ordinance pursuant to what the Ohio Legislature passed in House Bill Number 5, which drastically changed Chapter 718 of the Ohio Revised Code, which controls how local governments may collect taxes. The stated reason for this overhaul was to make local tax laws more uniform and consistent among all municipalities in Ohio, and payment dates consistent with federal and state laws. This bill specifically mandated that municipal income tax codes be amended by January 1st, 2016, to reflect the provisions and limitations specified in Chapter 718 of the Ohio Revised Code, or the municipality may no longer collect income tax. Accordingly, I move that we adopt, what we're, we're going to do is, this is going to be the first of three readings of this ordinance. Due to the detailed nature of the tax laws and everything like that, we want to give everybody the opportunity to understand the complexity of some of the changes. Accordingly, we move to adopt ordinance number 2015-12.
Because it's the first reading, there's no need for a motion. We'll make the motion on the third reading.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from any of the members of council? And I think it would be worthwhile to just point out that this has limited impact on Amberly Village residents.
Right. The change, a lot of the changes are affecting communities which don't have some of that operating loss carryforwards. The Ohio law requi, one of the big changes was the five-year carry, loss carryfor which a lot of communities did not have. Amberly Village has always had that provision. There's a lot of things which are better defined, such as what determines who is a resident of a community. Every community has their ordinance, but a lot of, it's been subject to interpretation by the particular tax administrator of each community. So the laws are, have been all over the place now with this, the Ohio Revised, change of the Ohio Revised Code, which mandated that all communities adopt the new laws and rewrite their tax ordinances to be consistent with the Ohio Revised Code.
And, and also, just for residents, in the print newsletter that will be coming out, I think in your mailboxes in early October, there'll be a summary of these changes, and as well as a, another communication later in the year, just to explain the minor changes and how those impact residents here in Amberly.
The one other change is that where you used to be able to make your tax payment, your quarterly estimated tax payments by the end of April, July, October, and January, that law has now changed to, it's going to be 15th of April, June, September, and January. These are, which will be consistent with Ohio and federal laws.
One other?
Just, just a comment. The new tax code is 55 pages long. Since I'm an insomniac, I actually, took me five nights to go through this whole thing, because it will put you to sleep very quickly.
So that, is that why you came later?
Yes.
That is the issue with that. Next item I wish to present is an adjustment to 2015 appropriations through, via ordinance number 2015-13 to appropriate funds in the Mayor's Court Agency Fund. In December of 2014, appropriations were set at $100,000 for the Major, for the Mayor's Court Agency Fund, and based upon receipts, which were based upon receipts from 2014 and anticipated activity in 2015. However, it is necessary to increase the Mayor's Court Agency Fund appropriations by $50,000 for the remainder of 2015 due to the increase of revenue, which is a good thing. Accordingly, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2015-13, increasing the appropriations to Mayor's Agency Fund by $50,000.
Second.
It has been moved in seconded that we adopt ordinance 2015-13, amending appropriations for this fiscal year. Are there any questions or comments from council? If not, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt ordinance 2015-13. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Bill Doring?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we will have a report from the Streets Public Utilities and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're looking at Resolutions 2015-21, which is a little unusual, because this resolution is authorizing the village manager to reject the bids received for the 2015 Stormwater Rehab Program. Primarily, the big problem we had this year was the weather. You know, it's been raining all summer, and all the contractors out there are all weeks and months behind on their work. So consequently, we only received two bids for this project. One of them was almost twice what the village engineers proposed, and the second bid, we have concerns about the contractor's ability to do the necessary work, because this has not been their forte in the past with the references. So we've just, we recommend that, this has gone through the Stormwater Advisory Board, it's gone through the Streets Committee, and we concur with the village engineer's recommendation that we reject the two bids, and we will rebid this early in 2016. So I'm asking the council to approve that resolution authorizing the manager to reject the two bids.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015-21, authorizing the village manager to reject the bid for the 2015 Stormwater Program. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015-21. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted, it passes unanimously. And I-
That concludes the Stormwater Program and Streets. Thank you.
Okay. What I would propose at this point is that we take the report from the Health Education and Welfare Committee, and then we will go back to the agenda item, now that Ali has been able, been able to join us, and that's great. So I will turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, I have two resolutions that I'd like to present to council. The first being Resolution Number 2015-22, which proclaims the month of September 2015 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. The American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report that cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. One of five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants and children and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. The American Cancer Fund for Children was founded over 20 years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, as well as the Kids Cancer Connection, and both are dedicated to helping children and their families. The American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection both provide a variety of patient physio, physios, sorry, psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Nationwide Children's Hospital in Columbus and Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for those children and their families. Both of the organizations provide presentations and community get well cards and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of Amberly Village that September 2015 is designated as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and that we call upon the citizens of Amberly Village to recognize the effect of childhood cancer on those around them, and to make themselves more aware of the efforts to fight childhood cancer.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015-22, declaring the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Amberly Village. Are there any questions or comments from the council? If not, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015-22. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted, it passes unanimously.
Next, I would like to present Resolution Number 2015-23, proclaiming the month of September 2015 also as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed non-skin cancer in men, and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in men. One in seven men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer. Every day, another 630 American men learn they have prostate cancer. In every 18 minutes, a man dies from prostate cancer. In addition, African-American men are 50 percent more likely to be diagnosed with prostate cancer than Caucasian men, and more than twice as likely to develop advanced prostate cancer. And also, during the early stages of prostate cancer, there are no symptoms. Most prostate cancer is found by prostate cancer screening tests, and all men are encouraged to increase their awareness of the importance of prostate cancer screenings. Therefore, I would like to resolve that Amberly Village designate and proclaim the month of September 2015 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and call, we call upon all of the citizens of Amberly Village to recognize the importance of early screening and detection of prostate cancer.
Second. Okay, it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015-23, and declaring the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Is there any questions or comments from the council? The one thing I would note is that this is an initiative that's being driven by a woman in, out of the Columbus area, whose husband is a survivor of prostate cancer, and she has been trying to drive this initiative, initially in Ohio, and then she's trying to spread it nationwide. So it has been moved in seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015-23. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted, it passes unanimously.
I have a little bit more I want to say about the pedestrian safety that the Health Education and Welfare Committee has been working on. We had a very well-attended committee meeting last week, and suffice it to say, our citizens, our residents and citizens of Amberly are very concerned about pedestrian safety. They're active, and, and they know that there is only so much that, that they can do as a pedestrian to keep themselves safe. In addition, in light of that, we've been working hand-in-hand with the police department, and the chief presented some proposals to the committee last week, and also a summary of what they've done, and I just wanted to review a little bit with all of you. So, under the leadership of Chief Wallace and, and Brian Bloom, we have learned about the three Es of traffic safety: education, engineering, and enforcement. And every action taken by council and the department administration falls under one of these Es. So under education, our newsletter routinely now includes articles on pedestrian safety and articles on the distribution of fluorescent, fluorescent safety belts. There has been more police presence in complaint areas, and you also may have noticed a very increased use of speed monitoring devices. Not all of those devices are simply to let the drivers know their speed, but some of them were collecting data that has been used by the committee in examining the safety of our side streets. So for engineering, we've added speed limit signs to the entrances to the village, repainted crosswalks, upgraded crosswalks in the school zone, and added hash marks for higher visibility, included early warning signs and pavement markings for the crosswalks. You may have seen pedestrians walking against the traffic signs on section road, and we've installed- installed radar and enforced signs. And our officers have made increased stops, and you may have been the recipient of a ticket in a school zone, but please, you know, this is just for the safety of everybody. So as a result of examining the speed in the residential neighborhoods, two locations have been selected for the installation of temporary speed bumps, and those are Elbrook between Royal Oak and Laurel Oak and Fairhaven between Rolling Knolls and Willow Ridge. Those are areas where higher rates of speed have been detected, or else, in addition to, for example, Fairhaven, has been a cut-through street for residents and non-residents, and the speed there increases. So these are temporary, they can be moved to other streets, but we're going to see how it works. Also, the committee is researching the pricing on a sidewalk on Elbrook Road from-- Elbrook Drive from Section Road to north to 7085 Elbrook. That was even requested by the resident who spoke in council last month, Mikey Fishman, and a lot of the residents on Elbrook, and it in fact has come up over and over again in our committee meetings. So we're going to see what that's going to cost and maybe be able to do that. And what else? And we're still looking into ways to make the crosswalk, the new crosswalk at Section and Fair Oaks-- Fair Acres Drive safer for pedestrians to use to cross the street. So I've-- we're not-- we've been meeting for a year on this particular single issue. We're not done, and I encourage residents to come to these meetings and give your input, and we are-- you have a council that is ready to listen to your thoughts and opinions on making Amberly safer for all pedestrians. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there questions for the Vice Mayor?
Oh, no, no, I have one more thing.
Okay.
Sorry. Any questions on that issue? I have one more thing. It's about We Thrive, and it's really about the community garden for which Amberly received a grant four years ago, and it's been very successful, and I wanted to make our residents aware, they may have seen it already, if you walk past the garden, there's a new sign. It says Amberly Village Community Garden, and it was put there by the Civic Garden Center of Cincinnati, and it is designed. We didn't spend any money on this, but the Civic Garden Center has a new initiative where they are seeking sponsors for community gardens, and Amberly has a sponsor, is Western Nursing. And Western Nursing has a connection to Amberly Village in that a parent lives in Amberly. So we are a very successful garden and a recognized garden community. Now, that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the Vice Mayor on that particular item? If not, we will move on to an earlier agenda item, and that namely is the recognition of Aleah Nuradon. Aleah, if you could, please step forward. And I think I will do this down front. Okay. First, I mean, Aleah really brought this initiative to us. This was-- Aleah identified in-- as part of her senior project at Mount Notre Dame, the idea of doing something with rain barrels and water quality, and it fit very well with what the Environmental Stewardship Committee was seeking to do, and so we were very excited about it, and it has been a very successful project. So I just want to read something that recognizes your contribution to Amberly and the Environmental Stewardship Committee. Amberly Village recognizes Aleah Nuradon for the excellent project related to water quality presented to Amberly residents. During this project, Aleah, in June of this year, Aleah made a presentation to Amberly residents on ways to improve water quality. This presentation fit very well with the Environmental Stewardship Committee's initiative related to water quality. Aleah applied for and received a grant which provided interested residents with rain barrels. As part of this, Aleah helped residents in the assembly and placement of these rain barrels. Amberly Village appreciates Aleah's initiative, hard work, and wisdom during this project, and looks forward to the ongoing benefits from this project. This is presented on September 9th, 2015, by myself as mayor of Amberly Village. Congratulations. And I-- one other thing I have to mention that I thought was so impressive, during this presentation on June 10th, and I could relate to this, we had problems with our audiovisual equipment. Not Aleah's equipment, it was our equipment. And having been someone who've been in meetings where the equipment wasn't working, and, you know, I have to say, I did not stay quite as cool as you did during this, and you really did very much keep your cool and went on with the presentation just as is, and I think that is a great sign for success in your future. So as an Amberly resident and a future graduate of Mount Notre Dame, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll now move on to the next agenda item, which is a report back from the Police and Fire Department.
Okay. The committee last met on August 25th. We meet about every two to three months for general updates from the chief on the department, and he shared a number of things with us that day. First, he did mention that Sergeant Ryan Shaw would be promoted to sergeant, and he discussed the fact that he's looking to develop more of a crime scene unit for investigating crimes so that there's sort of more cross-training, more people available to fulfill functions so that investigation is not dependent on a single individual being around at a given time, to spread things out a bit. They are working on developing a K-9 position, and Officer Alt has been very-- taken a strong initiative on bringing this forward. We had heard about it last-- a few months ago, and they've gotten to the point they've developed internal procedures, they've secured grant money, and so we'll be hearing more about that in the next few months as well. In response to recent car break-ins, as many communities are having, they have been-- the chief reported that they have been putting on extra patrols, including on bike and on foot, and the chief appeared on the sheriff's radio program and shared some information about that as well, how to prevent car break-ins. Secure your valuables, keep them out of sight. And finally, we learned that the mayor's JCC has selected the Amberly Village Police and Fire Department as their Partner of the Year, and they will be presented with this award at the JCC's annual meeting on Thursday, September 17th, which is open to the public. I think it's most noteworthy that this award is a recognition of exemplary work over several years. It's not just, oh, you did a great job on one thing this year, but it recognizes sustained work together for the benefit of the JCC. So that concludes my report.
Are there any questions or comments?
If I am not mistaken, and you may be calling it something else, that is the highest volunteer award that the JCC--
That is entirely possible, but that is the term that they use in their current literature.
And I do know it is an award that's not given every year, it is not an automatic award, so again, I think that is another indication of how much they appreciate the work of the Police and Fire Department.
And the chief has invited the whole department to go.
Excellent.
The annual meeting, it's at 7:00, I don't know what point in the agenda the award will be given. That's at the J, of course.
All right, thank you. We will now move on to a report from the Compensation and Benefits Committee.
Thank you. The Compensation and Benefits Committee met last week on September 2nd. We were honored to have with us Mark Schlegek, manager of Bell Brook and treasurer of the Center for Local Government Benefit Pool, to provide us with an annual update of the status of the benefit pool. The benefit currently consists of 16 municipalities, including Amberly, and covers about 600 individuals. The function of the pool is to create a stronger and presumably less expensive way to manage our healthcare costs. To manage risk even further, we're part of a larger pool, the Jefferson Health Plan. The Jefferson Health Plan has 100 member organizations representing about 10,000 individuals. During this sixth year of operation, the CLGPP set out to build its reserves. The target was 1.4 million, and it currently stands at 1.37 million, essentially meeting its target. Over plan year seven, which started in August, the pool anticipates building the surplus another half million dollars. As I reported at the last council meeting, employees will not experience any increase in their healthcare premium. Also, as I've shared before, when we started this process, the road was quite rocky with considerable uncertainty with regard to premium stabilization, and over the last two years now, the situation has improved considerably with premiums now under control. Separately, just to change subject, for the last two years, our committee has led an annual performance review of the village manager. I think you'll agree, this process has been very productive. It enables each council member and the manager to review the past year, having a productive dialogue of what's worked, what can be improved, and planning for the next year. We're going to start this process again, with forms to be distributed, meeting, and coming up with a plan for the upcoming year. So be on the lookout for your email. And that concludes the report from the Compensation and Benefits Committee.
Are there questions or comments? No. Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the Land Development Committee, and I'm the chair of the Land Development Committee. I just wanted to report back, at the last meeting, we talked about the agreement related to the north site. The agreement with-- to sell the north site was entered into on September 1st. So September 1st starts the 60-day process that we discussed at the last meeting. The initial 30 days will be looking at economics related to the project, and the second 30-day will be looking at more typical due diligence efforts related to environmental title work, et cetera. And during this process, there will be a lot of feedback given to Amberly, so we will be very knowledgeable as to how it's going so far, and so far, it appears to be going very well. So I will give another report back at the next council meeting related to that. And then on the Amberly Green, as you're aware, we had sent out in mid-July a expression of interest out to the-- to various members of the local-- the greater Cincinnati community involved in property development, asking for submissions from people to express, you know, ideas on how to move forward. And the deadline for those was August 31st. We have received four submissions, and those are currently being reviewed, and we will meet as a land development committee in the next week, week and a half, to discuss those and determine the way forward, and again, that will be presented to council at the next meeting. That concludes my report. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, we will now move on to the manager's report.
Last month, the village council authorized the application for the Farm Crest Grant. This is a grant to revitalize the streets, reconstruct the streets in the Farm Crest area. As you know, when you authorize the grant, we had an estimate on what the project was going to cost. We did finalize the grant application, made the submission earlier this month. The grant act-- the project estimate actually increased slightly, we added a few additional line items, but the total project at this point is estimated at $1.5 million. We've been able to identify two grants to apply for. One is the Ohio Public Works Commission Grant, and that was the impetus behind this particular application. So the amount that we were applying for turns out to be $986,000, so that's a significant portion of the $1.5 million cost. And then we were also able to identify an additional revenue source, grant source, to tap into, and that's called the Municipal Road Fund, and there's about $95,000 in that fund that we believe that we will be able to access. So that will leave the village with the responsibility of about $463,000 to accomplish a $1.5 million project, so we're pretty pleased of how that application came together, and we should know something by the end of the year as to whether we are successful with this application. So I just want to update council that that has been finalized and has been submitted. On a personnel matter, the village has been notified that maintenance worker and firefighter Tom Carr is going to be retiring this year. Tom has spent 25 years with the village and had previous time in another community, so he has indicated he will be retiring at the end of November. So we are currently in the process of seeking his replacement, so we are recruiting, so if anybody knows of individuals that might be interested in a maintenance worker position or-- and/or firefighter position, that position is advertised on our website and advertised in various other publications. Another item for our residents is that there is a household hazardous waste drop-off that's not scheduled for Amberly Village, but it does include Amberly Village. That's going to be held on September 26th from 9 until 2:00. That's going to be in Norwood, so if residents are interested in that, we do have information about that, but that's available to all Hamilton County residents. And as I indicated in the manager's report, there is an opportunity for council if you're interested in getting a tour of Rumke's Material Recovery Facility, which is located in St. Bernard. They offered this earlier last year, and it was a great opportunity to see how recycling materials are handled and picked. So here's another opportunity coming up for council, that's going to be held on Thursday, September 24th. So if you're interested, I have the information there to-- that you can contact to put your reservation in for that. Vice Mayor Wolf mentioned the Health Education and Welfare Meeting, some of the actions that were-- that came out of that, and two of those items have been implemented last Friday, that would be September 4th. The pedestrian sign was installed in the crosswalk in the area of 2400 Section Road, so that is right-- sits on the double-yellow line on Section Road. It just brings additional awareness to the crosswalk that is just east of Farm Acres Drive. And then the second item I wanted to mention, that following with what Vice Mayor Wolf mentioned, is the temporary speed hump. One was installed today on Fairhaven near Rolling Knoll, so that was installed this afternoon, and then the second one should be installed probably later this week, so both of those will be in place. Those are both temporary at this time. So that concludes my report, thank you.
Are there questions for the manager?
Well, really, I just want to encourage my fellow council members to go on the Rumke Tour. Counselor Conway and I went last year, and it is a lot of fun. You went and Bill-- okay, well, I didn't know, you didn't go with us, but it was-- and Bill can agree, I'm sure, it's very fun and very interesting and really inspiring to open your eyes. I mean, you will no longer even throw away your toilet paper rolls in the garbage, you will be super careful to make sure no plastic bags go in your recycling bin because that can stop the whole process. So go and come back and talk to all your neighbors about it, it's great.
Okay, Councilwoman Dorian?
Just a quick question for Scott. On the speed bumps that we're temporarily putting in, what kind of signage is there to warn the drivers that this is coming up?
There's a sign on both sides of the street that advises residents of the speed hump. So it's clearly posted that there is a speed hump there, and the speed humps actually have markings on them, so as you're traveling down the street, you will see hash marks on the speed hump that indicates you're approaching something. It clearly stands out.
Also, at the hump, there's actually a suggested speed as well on the hump. As you approach it, there's a sign that'll give a suggested speed.
And to follow up with Vice Mayor Wolf's suggestion about the Rumke, I think the biggest surprise that I had was how much non-recyclable materials gets put into-- biggest surprise that I had was how much non-recyclable materials gets put into the recycling bins. I mean, it was, I saw there was a, a garden hose went through, went, of course, got caught in the reels, and they had to shut the whole line down. I mean, it was unbelievable, the bags of garbage and diapers, and unbelievable what, what goes in there. So, you gotta, I think people have to recognize that these workers have to go through all this sorting to do all this. And we need to do our best to keep in line with what is recyclable.
Other questions? Scott, just two things. On the Norwood recycling event?
Yes.
Will we put that on our website, or, you know, can we somehow inform residents of that opportunity?
Yes, we can do that. That'd be a great idea. Thank you.
And can you say what constitutes household hazardous waste? Is it like cleansers and stuff like that, or?
Paint, cleansers, yes, those types of things.
Oil-based paint.
Oil-based, yes.
Just oil-based. Because if it's, if it's latex, they do not take it.
Okay.
Because latex, you can dry and put in the regular garbage.
Okay.
And then, the only other question, on the $95,000 grant, if we get the $95,000 grant, but do not get the other grant, what happens to, to the $95,000 grant? Is it specific to the, to the Langdon Farm Project?
Well, my recommendation would be to not accept the $95,000 grant.
Okay, so we just, and it is, but it is specific to the Langdon Farm Project?
Yes. To the Farm Crest.
Farm Crest.
Yes.
Sorry. Close enough.[921.44][921.44](LAUGHING) Okay, thank you for the report. We now move on to the chief's report.
Thanks. I just want to point out, probably about 2011, 2012, I approached council with our, the need for self-contained breathing apparatus, also known as SCBAs. And we had been working aggressively to pursue a grant for that. Probably about three or four years ago, we approached council, we had to get some monies to get our, some of the new bottles, to get them up to specifications. And we knew this is going to be a large purchase. This year, when we did the budgeting, we budgeted around $180,000 to purchase that system, but we've kind of been waiting throughout the year to make the purchase until the grant was released. And we were notified that we did receive the FEMA grant of $171,000. And that'll go toward 22 new self-contained breathing apparatus, as well as the Cascade System fulfilling the new units. This is a huge, this was a huge undertaking. We've been going over this, working on this for years. Sometimes, you know, we, we, we would submit it over and over and over, just hoping to get further and further along. So, the work that Officer Chris Fritsch and Sandy Pye, when our grant coordinator, has been doing on this, has just been outstanding. And this time, they actually got us all the way through the process, and we received the $171,000, which is just a huge undertaking. The village will have to ma- have a match on that. It, it's going to be under $10,000 would be our portion. So, we're excited about this, and, you know, they both should be commended for their actions and their hard work of doing this. And we're still in the running for a few other items that are out there. So, it's happy to bring it to council and let everybody know. And if you have any questions, I'll answer them.[1038.58][1038.58](APPLAUSE)
Are there any questions for the chief related to that?
Just way to go. I mean, I, the, the Police and Fire Committee hears periodically about their grant efforts, and I, and through those meetings, I know what a Cascade System is, and I know what SCB, is that it S-A, apparatus. And it is integral to their work, and it is really great to get that money for something that's so integral and expensive.
Anything else?
No, just on a personal note, I mean, everyone knows that I've been going through a lot at home with my wife being ill, and I just want to, I don't know if this is the proper stage to do this, but I'm going to do it, just say thanks to council, thanks to the residents, for everyone that's reached out to support us, from, you know, people bringing meals to our houses, to being at a benefit for my wife. It meant a lot to us. I'm not going to say too much, because everybody know I'll get emotional. So, I just want to, you know, reach out. I mean, I'm going to thank everybody and send cards, but I, you know, I know there's someone out there I'm going to miss, and I don't want to miss anyone. But, it, it means more than what I could ever say to anybody, but thanks.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. We'll now move on to the mayor's report, and I have three items. First, I want to recognize Councilman Warren, who pointed this out to both Scott and I. This was a initiative that we were not aware of, and as Amberly Village, I think it was very appropriate. I, I have passed this out to each of the residents, but it, it is a program called Mayors United Against Antisemitism. And I just want to read the first two paragraphs, because to me, this, this not only summarizes this program, but very much summarizes, you know, how we as, as communities should deal with everything. But, what it says is, "We the undersigned mayors and municipal leaders recognize that we live in a global era. Our cities and towns, regardless of size, belong to a global community in which our citizens are more interconnected than ever, and where events in one community can have ramifications across the world. We also understand that mayors and municipal leaders have a significant role to play in promoting respectful communities that advance coexistence among peoples of all races, ethnicities, and faith, and that success of any city or town is based upon people of all backgrounds coming together to move our civic communities forward." And I thought that, that was a great statement, and Amberly Village is now a signatory to this. As of the day, we signed it on August 25th. As of August 25th, there were 202 mayors across, or municipal leaders across the United States that were signatories, representing 56 million people. And they're also spreading this initiative throughout Europe. Locally, Cincinnati, Blue Ash, Loveland, and Reading have signed. And we will get this posted on the website, but I, I really do think it's something very appropriate, and I thank, thank the Councilman Warren. Next item on the agenda is on the Environmental Stewardship Committee. Their full program is going to be October 25th, which is a Sunday, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And it is, it's a French Park Creek Walk. And what the per- program has representatives from Cincinnati Parks, Hamilton County Public Health, and the Mill Creek Watershed. The details are still being worked out, but in all probability, it will involve starting probably up at the shelter house, walking down to the creek, doing a creek walk, and then having a, a question and answer period down at the picnic tables down by the entrance. But, they're going, during this, they will be discussing the geology and history of the area, the importance of the watershed in our area, the headwaters, the stormwater behaviors, et cetera, the effects of fertilizer, fertilizers, pet waste, and grass clippings on our water quality, and, you know, think, just things that we can do to help water quality. So, hopefully, this will be a great program. Watch for additional details. There will be a, an item in the print newsletter, but there'll be additional details coming forward on that program. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention was that on August 26th, I attended a meeting of the Hamilton County Solid Waste Management Program. This is the program whereby we receive the additional monies for our higher recycling program. And I think this past year, we've received 13,000 or 14,000. I think Amberly Village, out of the approximately 34 communities that participate in that, participate in the program. In 2014, I think we were ranked eighth or ninth. And the purpose of the program was to discuss whether any changes should be made to the program. There was some discussion of, you know, changing it to give more incentive to some, some very low achievers. I think what, what we pretty much decided was to set aside probably some small amount of money to help incentivize the lower achieving programs, but to largely keep the program pretty much the same, because it has been a very successful program. I mean, that was the first question that was asked at the meeting, is do people consider this program very successful? And, you know, there was unanimous belief that it has been a very successful program. But, there was one item that was presented that was very interesting. They, all the stats is always just showing recycling. But, they also added, they, they wanted to show what the, what the stats would look like if you add in basically yard waste, and how much of, between recycling and yard waste versus the percentage that goes to the landfill. And interestingly, Amberly Village moves from ninth to first. And it's not even close. I mean, Amberly Village, 60%, if you, if you look at total waste being the, made up of our yard waste and our recycling and, and what goes to the landfill, 60% of ours would, avoids the landfill, because we either recycle it, or we put it into our woodchips, or leaves, or so forth. The next closest to us was 50%. And so, I think what you will see is that Hamilton County will be communicating that a lot more, because it was felt that that is an important statistic to get out there and recognize that those communities that are doing a lot to keep yard waste out of landfills and other things. With that, that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any questions?
Just a quick comment about the Norwood recycling, because we've had success, but they are not going to be taking electronics or paper at this collection point, since that's what most of ours is. When we have ours, I just wanted to mention that.
Just wanted to make one comment. First, I wanted to thank Nicole for recently sending out a survey to all Amberly residents. This is a Survey Monkey, Monkey, I always get confused, Survey Monkey, Monkey Survey. Basically, a review of asking residents to comment about the recent 75th Amberly Village celebration. So, be on the lookout.
You, you jumped the gun a little bit. I think that was probably new business, but, and that's fine. But, any, any questions on the mayor's report? If not, the mayor's report is concluded, and we will move on to new business. Is there any other new business?
My new business is actually regarding the survey, because I received the survey, I think it was this morning, and I was probably the first person to fill it out, or attempt to fill it out. And unfortunately, I was supposed to be able to click as many things as I did, but I was only able to do one thing, and I felt, I did it on my iPhone. It looks great on the iPhone, but it is not compatible, and I haven't tried it on the website. But, and it, aside from that, and I think a survey is a great thing, because it was a big event, we'd never done it before. But, I'm the chair of the Public Outreach Committee, and I didn't know anything about this survey, and I don't know if it was vetted by, it wasn't vetted certainly by the Public Outreach Committee, and I don't know if it was vetted by the 75th Anniversary Event Committee. So, just, just wanted to comment there that I'm not sure what channels it was sent by.
And I will definitely take responsibility for that. I mean, the 75th Anniversary did, committee did operate kind of independently. Councilman Warren did come to me, I think it was earlier this week or late last week, with the idea of doing the questionnaire. My initial reaction was, 75th anniversary, the next time we'll, we'll do one of these is the 100th anniversary. And, you know, I'm not sure I'll be around to remember.
Well, I would like to comment that I'm a member of the, I was a member of the Anniversary Committee, and I didn't know anything about it until it came in my inbox. And so, I just want to second Natalie's point that a committee process would have been more appropriate, and thank you for accepting responsibility.
And I'm not criticizing the, a survey. I think, I agree with Ray that, that we needed to have a survey, and not, not because, you know, in 25 years, we'll have another one, but it does give us some insight into our residents' feelings about their attendance at events, and would they go to, you know, more than, more events than just the ice cream. Like, that the ice cream social was included in it, and, but I would have liked, I would have liked to have been able to, to click more than one box, and I, and I maybe would have said, you know, have two events a year. But, I think that's where a committee process, vetting the, the survey would have come in handy, and we maybe would have got a little bit more information. That's all.
And so, I, I think probably the one thing should absolutely be committed to, any output from the questionnaire will be reviewed with the Public Outreach Committee. And, you know, at that point, you know, it might even be that the Public Outreach Committee determines that some follow-up is necessary, or something like that. And I, again, I accept responsibility and apologize.
I just, if I can just share one thing. I certainly didn't mean to exclude anyone. I had this survey vetted by other people. What people shared with me was the timeliness to do a survey after event, that it's important to do it as close to that event as possible. This way, it's in people's memory. So, it wasn't meant to exclude anyone.
No one said it was meant to exclude.
Understood, understood.
So, just hear it. Just take it in.
I am.
Any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.